Mike check, Mike check. All right, thank you everyone for bearing with us. My fault, there were some technical difficulties. I think we have everyone back, and I know we have a really packed agenda. Will I have everyone back?
One, two, three, okay. Four, five, six.
So, good evening. Yeah, I'll get into it. Good evening, and welcome to the March 11th, 2025 Regular Session Meeting of City Council. If you are here tonight and would like to address City Council, please register with staff in the lobby. Please indicate Item I for matters germane to City Council. We also have a three-minute light system. After stating your name and address, you'll see a green light appear. After two minutes, you'll see a yellow light. After three minutes, you'll see a red light. At that time, please take your seat. The City Code identifies the procedure for participation regarding items on tonight's agenda and provides the opportunity for citizens to address City Council on matters that are germane to Council. Matters that are germane to Council means that matters that the City Council by law is empowered to act upon. Copies of this ordinance can be found at the desk in the lobby. At this time, please silence your phones. Prior to beginning the business portion of the meeting, Pastor Mike Torres with Revelation Church will provide an invocation to the Council. Afterwards, Councilman Coleman will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. It is our practice to stand for the invocation and pledge of allegiance. Those who also wish to stand are welcome, but under no obligation to do so. Thank you.
It's an honor to be here with you guys tonight in the stead of Apostle Jason Taylor, and on behalf of Oasis de Vida and Revelation Church, I want to say Dios te bendiga. If you guys can pray along with me. Heavenly Father, we come before you today lifting up our local government leaders and enforcement officers and community administrators. You have placed them in positions of authority to serve and protect and to lead and to guide, to uphold with justice and peace. We ask for your wisdom to fill their hearts and their minds as they make decisions that impact our communities. May they act with integrity, fairness, and compassion, always seeking the well-being of those that they serve. Lord, we pray for our law enforcement officers, Lord, as they bring justice and peace into our communities. Grant them courage in the face of danger and patience in times of tension, and strength to carry their duties, and God, bring them home safely to their families each and every day. Father, we also pray for our community as a whole that you unite us in peace, understanding, and cooperation. Remove division and hostility, Lord, replacing them with kindness, empathy, and shared desire to build a better future together. And may your presence be felt in every decision that is made here tonight and moving forward, and the actions that are taken within our community. Bless our leaders, protect our officers, and strengthen our community that we may reflect your love and your righteousness in all we do. In the name of Jesus, we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May I have a motion to excuse Councilman Ely from this meeting?
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. At this time, please call the roll.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick. Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Presentations. This evening, we have two resolutions of recognition. At this time, I would ask Councilwoman Dr. Sandra Cherry and Councilman Dave Jenkins to please join Council on the stage. I think so. My notes are not really clear. Can we have all Council?
All.
Yeah, all of us. Yeah, we'll do, we'll do Dr. Cherry first. Who wants to hold it? You gonna hold it? All right. Uh, Dr. Cherry's first. There's a lot that could be said, but Dr. Cherry, we would like to present from City Council, give you a framed resolution of appreciation. It's been a long time coming, and we apologize for the delay. I'm gonna blame probably Vice Mayor for the delay. How about that? All right. So, the resolution reads, whereas the Council of the City of Newport News wishes to honor and recognize Dr. Sandra Cherry for eight years of service as a member of the Newport News City Council, and whereas from July 2014 through December 2022, Sandra and Cherry served the South District. On July 14th, 2020, she was elected to serve as Vice Mayor by her peers on City Council, and served in that capacity for the remainder of her time on City Council. And whereas a Newport News native, Sandra and Cherry attended Huntington High School before graduating from Homer L. Ferguson High School. I'll skip the year. I got you. I skipped the year. I skipped the year. She received a dental assistance certificate from Old Dominion, an Associate of Applied Science Degree in Dental Hygiene, and her Bachelor of Science in Occupational Education from VCU. She later earned a Master of Science Degree from the University of Maryland at Baltimore, a Master of Divinity Degree from the Samuel D. Proctor School of Theology at Virginia Union University, and completed her Chaplain Residency at Riverside before receiving a Doctorate of Ministry Doc, uh, Degree from Regent University. And whereas Sandra Cherry has served as a passionate advocate and leader for the citizens of the South District and the entire city, striving to better the Newport News community while ensuring that citizens were heard and that their voices matter. And whereas Sandra and Cherry has deep roots in the community and has served as Chair of the James A. Fields House, Chair of the Downtown Newport News Merchant and Neighborhood Association, Member of Healthy Generations Coalition, Chair of the James A. Fields Neighborhood Watch, Chaplain for the Newport News Police Department, Member of the Newport News NAACP, Former Chair of the Planning District One Task Force, and Former Vice Chair of LINK. Whereas Sandra and Cherry has made valuable contributions to the city, the Virginia Peninsula, and the entire Hampton Roads region, which this Council wishes to recognize. At this time, Dr. Cherry, I'll give you the mic. You can, after you.
Good evening, everyone. I'm so humbled and honored to be here tonight. I honor, I'm honored because God is good. Amen. Through the eight years that I served on City Council, I want to say thank you to all of the residents that allowed me to represent them. I want to say especially thank you to Councilwoman Vick because she was truly a leader for me, and she guided me in so many things, in so many ways that I, things that I didn't know. So I want to say thank you. It was truly an honor to serve the community. I couldn't think of anything better that I could do. My passion was to be a Clarence, for the clarion call for our community, to be an advocate for them, to be at the table, to hear what was going on, and to be able to speak on behalf of the residents, especially of the Southeast community. So I want to say thank you. We worked hard, but we worked together. It didn't mean that we always agreed on things, but we were able to accomplish some great things that you're seeing manifested right now in downtown Newport News, and that was so important for me. So I want to say thank you. Thank you especially to all of the directors who tolerated my questions. I asked a lot of questions, y'all, didn't I? Yes. I asked a lot of questions, not because I thought I was smart, but because I did not know, and I trusted the directors that we had in the city to bring me the information that I needed to make the decisions that I thought was the best thing to do. And at the end of every City Council meeting, I had to look at myself in the mirror and say, did you do the right thing? Did you do the right thing? Not what you wanted, but what you felt was the best thing for the residents of Newport News. It was never about me, but it was always about serving my community in the best capacity that I could. So thank you so much, Mayor Jones. I love you so much. We've become good friends. And so, and thank you to the City Council for all of the time that we had together. God bless.
So, before we do Councilman Jenkins, we're gonna do a photo with the big photographer. So, Dave, you can get this one too. What's, what's the best way to do it? Right here? Yeah, we'll come right here. So now we'll have Councilman Jenkins. Councilman Jenkins, we would like to present you with a framed resolution of appreciation. The resolution reads as follows. Whereas the Council of the City of Newport News wishes to recognize and honor David Jenkins for his four years of service as a member of the Newport News City Council, and whereas from July of 2018 through December of 2022, David H. Jenkins served the citizens of the City of Newport News through the Central District. Whereas David H. Jenkins is a fourth-generation citizen of Newport News, where he grew up in the Haydenwood Neighborhood, attending Trinity Lutheran, Haydenwood Elementary, and Paul Lawrence Dunbar before graduating from Central Baptist High School in Hampton. Following graduation from the College of the Army Mary, he served his country as a U.S. Army Officer in the Medical Service Corps. He has been married for 36 years to Linda Haley Jenkins, who is also a former Army Medical Service Corps Officer and a Desert Storm Veteran. And whereas David Jenkins developed his skills during his service in the U.S. Army, serving in Desert Storm with the First Cav Division, and during his five years in West Virginia with the Third Infantry Division as a platoon leader, accompanying executive officer, commander, and on staff at the battalion, brigade, and division levels. And whereas Dave Jenkins has been a passionate, vocal leader and advocate for the citizens of his district as well as the entire city, representing Newport News on the Board of HR CAP and the Virginia Peninsula Safety Action Program. And whereas David H. Jenkins has made many valuable contributions to the city, the peninsula, and the entire Hampton Roads region, which this Council wishes to recognize. At this time, I invite Councilman Dave Jenkins for some remarks. Sir.
I just want to say real briefly, it was an honor to serve the people of Newport News. Serving in politics right now is difficult, but it was a rewarding challenge. And, you know, we don't fix problems overnight, but if we keep working away at the problems that we have, we will be successful, and we will continuously make our city better and be a more welcoming and embracing place. And that's what I tried to work toward. Thank you.
Congratulations, Dave.
And just once again, thank you to our council members for coming. Apologies for the delay, but I'm glad that we were able to recognize you and you were able to get your flowers. At this time, I would like to, as the Chair, have the prerogative to modify the agenda. Do I have a motion to do such from City Council?
Come on.
Second.
At the time, please call the roll.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you for City Council for guiding me that leeway. I would like to make a motion to reconsider Item E1 from the February 25th Regular Meeting of City Council regarding the adoption of an ordinance to approve conditional zoning application, Charlie Zulu dash two zero two four dash zero zero one. Before I take a second, actually, let's do, I'll make that motion.
Second.
Motion moved and seconded. Before I call the roll, some comments that I have. I believe that we as a council, I think as mayor, I'll take the blame for this. I think we need to do a better job when it comes to our process. I think we need to streamline some certain things. And so, Mr. Keel, if you could come to the mic, please. I'll hear your comments, but before, I would say, as, as the Chair, I believe that this matter needs to go back to planning. I don't like the process that, what happened. I still fam, I still stand firm in my belief. However, I think all the things, the proffers, the community involvement, it needs to be, go back to the drawing board. I believe we owe the citizens that, and I believe that we on Council owe you a fair process. So I'll let you make some comments, and then we'll vote on this.
Yes, thank you. I want to.
Give me, so one sec, sir. Can we get the mic? In the back? Okay.
Okay, I'll probably have to move closer, I'm sorry. I would like to first start by saying thank you for the motion to reconsider this. You know, the, the process, I'm gonna take a lot of the blame for it. You know, we could have been more humble in the way that we presented this project to the City of Newport News. You know, when we didn't get the, the votes at the last meeting, I never took it as a no. You know, I took it as, you know, we needed more time, and it was some procedural things that, you know, my side could have, you know, stepped forward and asked for. That's neither here nor there, but, you know, this project here, you know, I want to be an asset to the community. You know, I don't want this project to divide the community in any way. I'll take full blame from the standpoint that the process could have been more transparent to the citizens. You know, and a lot of things were done and agreed upon at the last second, and I know that's no way of doing business. And so, as the CEO and, and the head of this project, you know, I'll, I'll take all the blame on me. This wasn't a Allen Iverson thing. I mean, I'm in charge of the day-to-day, and we could have gone about the process in a more humble manner. So I do thank you as Newport News City Council, if you guys do decide to bring this back, you know, for giving us the opportunity to check all of the boxes that need to be checked, to make sure all of the proffers that we promised are, you know, in the package, and we, and we, you know, have the time and the ability to go out and reach out to the community. I feel like, you know, it was also unfair for all of those that support the project. You know, it's unfair for the supporters to have to support it after a meeting. You know, their voice should be heard up front as well. So I don't think we did any favors for ourselves by, you know, kind of rushing the process. You know, but, you know, I thank you guys for, you know, reconsidering this, and, you know, I'll rest assured that moving forward, I'll get with the Councilmen of the North District, you know, Councilman Bethany and Councilman Harris, and we'll do this thing the right way if given another opportunity.
Thank you, sir. And I'll make some comments after the vote. So as a reminder of this motion to reconsider Item E1 regarding the adoption of an ordinance to approve conditional zoning, and I think we have, it's been moved and seconded. At this time, please call the roll.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Let the matter and let the record reflect that this will be referred back to planning. I also want in the notes indicate that this decision is not with planning, it will reside back with City Council. And for Mr. Keel is that when it is ready, right, when it is ready to be heard from Council, it will be heard from Council. Thank you, sir.
Mr. Mayor, are you making a motion to defer the matter?
Yes, I am.
Second.
Do we need to do that again? Bob?
Yeah, I think the motion.
Okay, so yeah, so the motion, once again, the motion is we are now going to defer it. It's gonna be sent back until it's ready to be heard from this body. So it's been moved and seconded. Call the roll.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Page three, Item E1 is a request adopted ordinance authorizing the city manager to execute all documents necessary to make offers to acquire by voluntary sale or condemnation portions of property for the Warwick Boulevard Sidewalk, Sidewalk Lucas Creek Road Boulevard Project. At this time, are there any speakers? I see that there is not. Motion to close public hearing.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Sorry, I didn't realize we were still doing this vote. Motioned off the ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Any discussion? Call the roll.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Consent Agenda contains the following items. Page 50, Minutes of the Work Session of February 25th. Page 69, Minutes of the Regular Meeting of February 25th. Page 95, Resolution to Comply with the Budget, Public Hearing Notice, Provisions of Chapter 25 of Title 15.2 of the Code of Virginia as Amended, entitled Budgets, Audits, and Reports. Page 99, Resolution Confirming, Ratifying, and Terminating Declaration of a Local Emergency Made by Winterstorm Kingston. Motion to Approve Consent Agenda, Item F1 through F4, All-Inclusive.
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, other City Council actions. Page 105, Item G1, Mr. Manager.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of City Council. Item G1 is a request to approve a resolution of concurrence for the issuance of revenue bonds in an aggregate amount not to exceed $6 million, $600 million, excuse me, by the Henrico County Virginia Economic Development Authority for the benefit of bond secures Mercy, Mercy Health Incorporated and its affiliates to include Mary Immaculate Hospital in Newport News in an amount not to exceed $65 million. Approval of this item tonight does not indicate the city is endorsing the project's financial viability or assuming responsibility for the bonds, and public funds are not pledged for repayment. I recommend approval.
We have no speakers. Motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
We had one speaker, sir.
Oh, there's a speaker? I don't see a speaker.
Brittany Simmons?
Okay. No, I think we're good.
Yeah.
I think we're good. Thanks. Let's go back. Is there a motion to approve the resolution?
Yeah, so moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carried, six zero.
Thanks. Appropriations, page 128, Item H, Mr. Manager.
There's only one appropriation item this evening. Item H1 is a request to approve a resolution appropriating a total of $1,757,573 of fiscal year 2025 Virginia Department of Transportation Revenue Sharing Grant Program, and $2,310,445 of fiscal year 2025 local project funds for four projects in the community. One, downtown pedestrian improvements. Two, Jefferson Avenue pedestrian improvements between Green Grove Lane to Industrial Park Drive. Three, Campbell Road pedestrian improvements between Bland Boulevard to Warwick Boulevard. And four, Jefferson Avenue at Wilcox Lane Traffic Signal. And four, Jefferson Avenue at Wilcox Lane Traffic Signal Masked Arm Conversion Project. Recommend approval of the item this evening.
At this time, I see there are no speakers, is that still accurate?
That is correct.
Great. Is there a motion to approve item H1?
So moved. Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Hearing none, call the roll, please.
Mayor Jones.
Four.
Councilman Long.
Four.
Councilwoman Vick.
Four.
Vice Mayor Bethany.
Four.
Councilman Coleman.
Four.
Councilman Harris.
Four.
Motion carried six zero.
Thank you. We're down to citizen comments. I see that there are no speakers, I will flip it over to City Man. Actually, let me pause. Did I miss any speakers? I don't have any.
Yes, sir. We do.
Okay, so it's not updating on my, on this laptop, then? So, I'll go with you, then.
Okay. Mr. Efrem Rogasa.
Okay.
Hello. All right. Good evening, Mayor and council members. I'm Efrem Rogasa, resident of North District of Newport News. I came here to speak on the proposed housing development sponsored by Allen Iverson Woods Run Neighborhood. Whatever the motivations or the reasons the City Council rejected that proposal, I'm glad that you did. Newport News is a disconnected city, and is hostile to pedestrians and bicyclists, and I'm not talking about rich dudes wearing tights. I'm talking about your constituents that have no options but to walk, bike, or take public transit. It's hard to love the city when residents have to walk through four to eight lanes of high-speed traffic with no sidewalks, cross busy intersections without a walk signal, or have a car barreling down on cyclists just trying to go home, praying to God that the driver's paying attention and not run them over. Affordable housing is not just affordable rent with amenities, but also to live in an area with adequate public transit options, and able to live decently and be part of the economy without owning a vehicle. So, what is the point of affordable housing if more than a third to half of their income goes to car payments, insurance, maintenance, repairs, and gas? But that housing proposal and other similar ones are not only soulless, boring, and absolutely lacking in character, it's also disconnected from the neighborhood. The only way in and out is by driving. What Woods Run and other neighborhoods across the city needs is a public playground or park for kids and young families to congregate, a place to hang out so they can actually meet each other face-to-face and get to know their neighbors. Right now, in my neighborhood, there's an empty and depressing concrete crater in the corner of Orianna and Warwick, and across from Warwick is an abandoned and rundown motel. But you know what those locations have? A bus stop. Buses that will lead directly to the shipyard, Riverside Medical Center, CNU, Patrick Henry Mall, Fort Eustis, and the brand-new Amtrak station. This City Council just eliminated parking minimum mandate. Use that as a leverage. Building parking is expensive, and housing developers would take every opportunity not to build excess parking to reduce costs. Let's not prioritize the accommodation of vehicles, but incentivize forward-thinking developers that build dense housing and business districts on a human scale, especially on those concrete craters and abandoned lots once that already has infrastructure. Don't get me wrong, Allen Iverson is one of my favorite ballers. You know, the answer is an inspiration to us normal, average-sized folks. I absolutely love his game. But I also love to live in a community where kids can actually walk and bike to school, to the playground, to the public library, or their friend's house without fear of getting run over by a vehicle. And senior citizens can visit their grandkids or disabled veterans to their medical appointment without the need for driving. That housing development sponsored by the Iverson family fulfills none of those, and I thank you for rejecting it. God bless.
Thanks. Uh, next up, Mabel.
Mr. Jawan Wheaton.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. Thank you all for what you do, definitely appreciate it. For the past ten years, I've served as a dedicated employee of NNDHS, and somehow I've avoided shelter duty. That changed last month. At approximately 6:30 PM on February 19th, Shelter H was activated. We were informed that the shelter would be open at 7:15 PM. At the time of this notification, heavy snowfall had already persisted for at least six to seven hours at that time, and it was showing no signs of setting up. Letting up, excuse me. Despite the conditions, my colleagues and I reported as required, ensuring that those in need had access to warmth and safety. Over the course of twenty-four hours, I witnessed firsthand the dedication and resilience of DHS staff. We worked together, supported one another, and did our best to make sure patrons were as comfortable as possible, given the circumstances. This experience raised important questions about what it truly means to be an essential employee. By definition, something essential is absolutely necessary or extremely important. However, this designation seems to apply inconsistently when it comes to compensation, and not at all considered one time for retirement. While guidelines exist for work hours and overtime are given, there's no reason that we can't do better by those who work for the city of Newport News. The city of Newport News employs approximately thirty-two hundred people, with shelter teams composed primarily of DHS employees, only about three hundred and seventy, or roughly eleven point five percent. Many of these employees already have regular on-call responsibilities in addition to shelter duties. Given these realities, I strongly, um, excuse me, encourage a review of current shelter operations to include reviewing and creation of policies that ensure timely communication to ensure safe travel to and from shelters for employees, expanding shelter responsibilities to include a broader range of city employees, leveraging additional talents and resources, implementing overtime pay for employees when shelter teams are activated. I am willing to contribute to discussions and efforts aimed at improving shelter operations for the benefit of both employees and the city. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you.
Request for the floor.
Yep. Vice Mayor.
Mr. Manager, can you educate us, please? What goes into the, I guess, alert of when a shelter is open, and who makes that decision?
Mr. Vice Mayor, that decision is made by the incident command staff, who man the city's emergency operations center as we ramp up operations and prepare to react and respond to emergency conditions, which we feel will require ordinary, extraordinary responses. So, as the gentleman who just spoke mentioned, one such response is opening an emergency shelter. Another such response would be responding to other natural disasters such as a hurricane or tornado or an ice storm. We've been very blessed in recent years not to have many of these incidents in our community. So, when we are put in a situation where we have to look at the overall life safety of our residents in the community, then we take appropriate steps as identified in the city's emergency operations plan and activate the emergency operations center accordingly.
Thank you. Who's the next speaker?
Mr. Juan Banner.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and everyone else. And also, I want to thank, I believe, the chief for giving me that warm welcome. My name is Juan Banner. I'm sixty years old. But before I get on with this, let me tell you about a skeleton in my closet. In nineteen ninety-two, I did three months in jail from stealing from my employer. That amazed me, that made me the man that I am today. Every employer that I worked for, they only told me that I got a reference for life. In, in twenty twenty-three, I mean, in twenty twenty-two, I was charged with a false sexual harassment from C&amp;F Enterprises. Oh, and my wife works there, and she just retired, she still works there. A lady would show me, she accompanied me under the guise of wanting to show me pictures of her granddaughter, whatever. She would hold her phone and stop on the pictures. Now, I never told no one this, I would only tell, told my wife. I found a guy on the job who was a friend of her husband. I went and told him, and what did she do? She ran up front and told Human Resource. Human Resource pulled me in office, the head of Human Resource, Jennifer Coleman, I mean, yes, yeah, Jennifer Coleman, and, um, and the vice president. And they asked me, "Did you ask Emma to go to the bathroom?" I said, "For what?" I said, "I'm not gonna take four words and make a paragraph out of it. You need to call her back in here and get a statement." Well, that didn't go right. They let me know that they run the meeting, and I told them, "Just because you educated, you in that spot, that'll make you smarter than me." So, they sent me home August the twenty-sixth of twenty twenty-two. I went to the police department, and she told me that I was gonna need a lawyer. I found out why, because sexual harassment is a civil crime. I went to the police department on Wolfen and Jefferson. They told me that it was civil. I found out about the EOC. The EOC heard my story, and whatever, they liked my story, so they presented it to the company. I had to go up against a paid lawyer. What the lawyer did, I was able to get a write-to-sue letter, if you, I was able to get a write-to-sue letter, because I pointed out to the lady that did the, um, the EOC, the lawyer in the response letter took three real cases that actually happened in the United States, and he pasted to the termination letter, which was a lie. Now, how can I testify that in his head that it was a lie? Because there's video, because I said, "There's video." So, to make a long story short, I wanted that write-to-sue letter. The lady that was, who did the false charges on me, they fired her then.
And what does that give you to wrap up? Because the-
Oh, okay. To make a long story short, I'm here with a message from the Deputy Unemployment Appeals.
Okay.
He called the company liars. They awarded me my money for unemployment. They in turn sent him, because the letter so damaged, they sent him a new termination paper saying that it wasn't sexual harassment, it was misconduct, and they want to appeal.
If you, just for the time, if you just give that to Ms. Mabel, I'll come talk to you afterwards, just for, because everyone gets their three minutes.
Okay.
Just stay right there, I'll come talk to you afterwards. Okay? I got you, I'll come talk to you.
Thank you very much.
I got you. Just stay right, just come right there, a second row, I'll come talk to you. I got you.
Thank you.
Of course.
Mr. Allen Tanner.
Tanner. And Ms. Ginger, can you stay with me? Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Allen Tanner. I've been here the last couple of meetings, and I'm here again tonight. We've got an unprecedented opportunity in downtown Newport News. I own a considerable amount of property down there, and what is occurring is this influx from the Navy, and the Navy who wants to create a lifestyle for these sailors onboard these ships. I feel that as a city, we should encourage what was stated in the housing study to form public-private partnerships with developers, with interested parties that want to come in and invest their money in downtown Newport News. We need to create funds to do it, so it doesn't, the burden doesn't fall on the taxpayer, either the federal taxpayer or the local taxpayers. It's for the investors to invest their money here and take advantage of a generational opportunity. It's coming, it's coming fast. The shipyard has ordered most of their employees to come back to their, to their jobs the first of April, and there's some wonderful opportunities, and having the city lead us in forming these partnerships with the nation. Come here, come invest in our communities here in Newport News. Build the world's greatest harbor. We've got the world's greatest shipbuilder, or hopefully we do. We've got some real wonderful assets here, and we need to start right now forming these alliances. And I think Mayor Jones, the Harvard Bloomberg study, also had recommended the formation of funds and of these P3 developments that can address the problems and monetize the city's wonderful assets they have, and the assets of investors, private, public, and the shipyard. And I would just ask to open the city up for that kind of investment, to let us know who we should contact about forming these. I mean, we can go to the outside community, but I want to know what we'd like to have here, what you want to see here, what you want to see for your taxpayers and your constituents. And let's start with downtown and make that something that's special. I grew up here, I love going downtown, still go down there every day, and there's some very exciting things that can be happening. And I just want to encourage you to do that, follow the studies, and I'm here and submit my properties to help do that. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Mr. Marcus Sims.
Is there Mr. Sims? Okay, next speaker.
That's it.
Okay. Apologies, I think we're having some, the computer was down, so thank you, Mabel, for that. We'll turn over to City Manager.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, I do have one item, excuse me, that I'd like to share this evening, and I suspect that it'll be repeated by many of you today. On behalf of the city administration, I wish to extend deep sympathy to former Mayor McKinley Price, who lost his beloved wife Valerie Price today. We pray for peace and comfort for the entire family. Thank you.
Allen, if I could jump in there, if we could just, for the record, let the record reflect a moment of silence at this time? Thank you. City Attorney.
I'll just echo those sentiments and extend my condolences to Mayor Price and his family in this difficult time.
City Clerk.
Yes, sir, I also extend condolences to the Price family.
Councilman Coleman.
Uh, yeah, with, with a heavy heart and great sadness, I want to send my condolences to the Price family on the loss of Valerie. She was a force of nature, especially being a part of that family. She was a strong woman, she was a devoted wife, she was a loving mother, and a incredible grandmother, and I know she is going to be greatly missed. You know, I just, fifteen years ago, I had the privilege of meeting the Price family, and, and just over that fifteen years, we've become more than just friends, we are family, and I consider her a great friend, and, like I said, a member of my family, and she's gonna be greatly missed.
Thanks, Rob. Tina.
Uh, yes, I, I, my sentiments, the same to the family, to former Mayor Price and the Price family. Valerie was just a jewel. She was also, we were all members of the same Alpha Kappa Alpha Sorority, and she will be missed, and I'm just praying for the entire Price family. But I do want to say too, thank you to Owen and everybody who was involved in making our city come alive for our One City Marathon Weekend. It was really great, the 5K, I think it was a record number, eleven hundred, a little over eleven hundred people who actually signed up and participated. And the weather held up for us, at least on Saturday. It was a little chilly, but the people had so much fun there, and it was just such a great weekend, the entire weekend, and the excitement of the vendors who were out there right in that area around the, behind City Hall for the One City Celebration. And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilman Harris.
Yes, I also want to extend my condolences and prayers to the Price family on the passing of Ms. Price. Every time I had an opportunity to come in to contact with her, she was always such an elegant and benevolent lady to engage with. I know she was such a shining example for, as a wife, as a mother, grandmother for so many, and also as an educator. She was, you know, played a part in how we could model, how we could be quiet in the background but powerful, yet so powerful out in public.
But I just want to share that to Mayor Price's daughter, son, that the Harris family will have you all in our prayers, and just wanted to send that condolences to them. And real quick, as we're congratulating, wanted to congratulate a group of young people here in our community, the Hampton Roads Hurricanes Track Club just participated in the indoor national competition. And from that competition this weekend, and these are young people from primarily here in Newport News, some in Williamsburg and Hampton, but majority of them are in Newport News, and they do everything in the North District as far as practicing. They ended with nine national champions, forty-four All-Americans, all from the AAU Indoor Nationals. These are young people from the ages of five to fourteen, and, I'm sorry, from five to high school age, but they were able to represent us well against competition from all across the country. And as you see the results speak for having nine national champions out of those age groups and events, and forty-four All-Americans. So congratulations to the young people and coaches and staff from the Hampton Roads Hurricanes. And that's all I have, Mayor, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Councilman Long.
I also want to echo the same sentiments, my sincerest condolences to the Price and Scott family for the loss of Valerie Price. And my prayers are with the family. I also want to mention the One City Marathon. I also thank the staff, it was a great event, and congratulate the winners, winners and participants that came out Saturday, it was a great day. I was out there with Tina Vic, Councilwoman Vic, and I felt like next year will be my year that I'm actually get out there and run alongside with Councilwoman Vic on the five K, so.
Let the, let the record reflect that.
Look forward to that as well, and that's all I have.
Thank you, sir. Vice Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I will, I will echo everyone's sentiments, I too want to offer my sincere condolences to the Scott and Price family. I had the opportunity of meeting Ms. Valerie thirteen years ago when I was a senior in college, and, and I had a community town hall event, didn't know me from Adam, but her, Mayor Price, and Rob also, also showed up, and I remember talking to her, just like, man, she is so peaceful. And I admire that, and I always strive to be very similar in that way, but I know that she will be missed for sure. It is, it is, it is rare that you get to meet amazing people like that who would just even kill calm-spirited folks, and I will always respect that about her. So again, I offer my sincere condolences to the families, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. As I close, I think thoughts and prayers don't sum it up enough to the Price and to the Scott family, so instead, I'll tell a story, and I told counsel this in closed session, but the last time that I talked to Mayor Price was at the Peninsula Airport Commission, and he pulled me aside and just told me, you know, some things that were happening in the family and with Valerie, and he said, but don't worry, he said, like, I'm locked in on the airport, right? So a true statesman, thoughts and prayers to the family. So perhaps the best way to close, may what you say and do uplift the City of Newport News, and we stand adjourned.